My call this evening to order, this is the regular meeting of the Northfield Public School Board. Today is Monday, April 13th, and the time is 7:00 PM. Dr. Richardson, there are a number of items in the table file?
Yes, all the items this evening in the table file are items that are from personnel. They include a number of appointments and a number of increase, decreases, and changes in assignments. So, I would recommend that those be added to the consent agenda for your action.
Okay, thank you very much. If there's no objection, we'll add these items to the agenda as we move forward. We now have the opportunity for public comment. This is a chance for members of the district to address the board. Is there anyone here who wishes to address the board? Okay, we'll move on to approval of the minutes. Board members, you have in your packets minutes for the regular school board meeting held on March 9th, 2015. Is there a motion to approve the minutes? Moved by Jeff, second.
Second.
Second by Ann. Any discussion, comments? So we'll move on to vote. All those in favor of approving the minutes for the regular school board meeting held on Monday, March 9th, 2015, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Motion carries. Carried, the minutes are approved. We'll move on to announcements and recognition. That's recognition. Dr. Richardson?
Okay, and I have a full page of them tonight, plus a couple of videos for your enjoyment. First of all, I'd like to congratulate all of the 27 Northfield students who competed at the DECA State Meet on March 8th through the 10th. A special congratulations goes out to Tyler Hepler, who scored second in his business finance event and earned a trip to DECA Nationals in Orlando, Florida on April the 25th through the 28th. Tyler made Northfield DECA history as he's the first student to earn a trip to Nationals. The following students also did very well at DECA State. Audrey Korkovin placed second in her sales demonstrations. Dylan Ronnie and Tyler Hepler placed fourth in their Learn and Earn Project. Jessica Watarwa, Jenna Sheffert, Lucas Halverson, J.P. Knudsen, Tara Barth, Ethan Finger, Anna Bolfany, and Henry Hofstadt were finalists. In other words, they were in the top 12 in their events. So, for an organization that's fairly new to our district, they have really made some great strides in terms of their performance at both the state and now at the national level. This year also, we'd like to congratulate Greenville Park. They donated $1,927 to the American Heart Association. Since Greenville Park started raising funds for the American Heart Association back in 1995, the school has raised nearly $70,000. So, what a great level of community service on the part of students from Greenville Park. We'd also like to announce tonight that Jody Johnson-Green, a 1990 Northfield High School graduate, has been selected as this year's recipient of the Distinguished Alumni Award. Jody enlisted in the Air Force after graduating early and quickly moved up through the ranks. She graduated from the University of Maryland and attended the National Defense University. Last year, Jody was named Deputy Under-Secretary of the Navy for Policy and is the top advisor to the U.S. Secretary of the Navy, Ray Mappus. Jody will be receiving that Distinguished Alumni Award on Wednesday, April the 29th, and the ceremony begins at 6:30 in the middle school auditorium. So, a great opportunity for us to recognize Jody for her accomplishments. We'd also like to congratulate Torch. They will be celebrating their 10th anniversary on April the 20th, and they are going to be having a celebration of that anniversary, again, from 7:30 to 8:30 PM on April the 20th in the Carlton College Alumni Guest House. And obviously, they would like to encourage board members to attend if you'd like to attend, and if you could, please let me know this week if you would like to, and I will make sure that I get the information as far as an RSVP out for folks. The next thing I'd like to present is some information about a group of our students that oftentimes works behind the scenes. All of us are very familiar with the annual Defeat of Jesse James Days in Northfield, but we have a number of hard-working students that help to make sure it's a success every year. As the town celebrates the defeat of the notorious robber and outlaw, that celebration includes a button, and those buttons, again, sell for $4. The button also helps a number of our special needs students work to put that piece together, and it's an opportunity for them to also build on skills. They are involved in making over 12,000 buttons every year. So, what we have is a little video which was on TV recently, and we'd just like to share that with you. Some special needs students in Northfield play a big role in the town's annual Defeat of Jesse James Day celebration.
Up to this point, though, very few have known about their involvement off 9th June to July in downtown Northfield, but more on how they're trying to change that.
Yeah, Kelsey, outside the original First National Bank, now in museum honoring the townsfolk who stood up against notorious bank robber Jesse James. Each September, there are reenactments of that day, parades, but you need a button like this one to get it signed. Now, the students behind him are finally being honored.
Norman Rockwell would probably have a Field Day painting picturesque downtown Northfield. His history book always talk about this community's stand against Jesse James after his crew tried to rob First National Bank in 1876. So each September, when the beauty of this town and patentry come together, 17-year-old Brogaskly sees it as a business opportunity. What do you like about the job?
Making my money.
Along with 13-year-old Marvin Ryan.
Doesn't take very long.
And several other special needs students.
I'll do the buttons, dude.
Are making buttons for the Defeat of Jesse James Day celebration. They're trying to make 12,500 buttons by the first week of September, right before the big event. Special needs students from Northfield Middle School and High School are hired.
We have students with Alzheimer's, students with autism.
And learn real-life skills.
They fill in the sign card, they get a paycheck, they endorse it, they cash the thing, we go and spend the money.
Lisa Laudergrin is one of the teachers guiding the program.
I don't think that they feel any different than the rest of us about doing successful jobs.
Without much fanfare, the students have done this for more than 20 years, toiling away behind the scenes. So this year.
So these have probably all been assembled over the years by those students.
The Jesse James Celebration's new board chair, T.J. Hymersey, will invite these students to be an official part of the promotional photos, the pig rows, and to be front row for the parade.
And I just want these bunch of kids who have never been recognized to know that they're part of our family.
For now, these students are craning away.
And they're wearing one of the buttons I'm making.
And feeling proud.
Yeah, I'm just like everybody else.
And still have a deadline to meet.
Now, the students make about 10 cents per button and can pump out about 150 of these a day, and that all starts to add up, and they're more than halfway there. From Northfield, Jonathan Joe Box, and I'm just glad.
They're doing a great job. Thank you, Jonathan. We want to cover your positive performances.
Okay, and then our last piece for this evening is, we'd also like to give recognition again to our robotics team for the new opportunities they've been involved with. Again, the past weekend, the Northfield Robotics Team competed in the North Star Regional First Robotics Competition at the University of Minnesota Minneapolis Campus. After a day of inspections and practice rounds and 1.5 days of competitive matches, the Northfield team was selected for the final alliance. Sounds pretty interesting. And were able to compete in the quarterfinals of the championship rounds. So, again, considering they have not been involved in this very long, they really have made some great strides. This year, they had some special pieces in that they also were invited to compile a chairman's award paper and also produced a video of the team's five-year history. And three of the team members, Lily Dunlop, Jackson Hillman, and Nathaniel Urkey, presented these to the First Robotics Competition judges. So, we have about a four-and-a-half-minute video that was made by the students to share with you information about the robotics team and the work they've done.
You may have heard about Northfield, Minnesota, before. We are the historic town that not only defeated the infamous Jesse James game, but we are also the location of two Rock Banks colleges, Carlton and Sayo. We are FRC Team 3691, the Northfield Robo Raiders. We are in our fifth year as robotics. Our team's comprised of students from Northfield High School and Arcadia Charter School, which is nearby. Over the years, our robotics team has learned that all aspects of First Robotics rely on learning and applying processes. This video outlines those processes that we utilize during our building season. It is important for our team to seek support from our school board for the robotics team because they allow us to offer First Robotics as a class and allow the use of high school facilities for our building session. Without sponsorships, our team would not be able to finance any support. Therefore, it is critical that we search for sponsors to support our cause. Once the game has been revealed and the kit of parts has arrived, our team begins designing the first prototypes for our robot. We utilize both sketches drawn by hand and AutoCAD details to conceptualize our design. After our team finishes the rough sketch of our robot's design, we begin applying engineering principles to ensure that our design will meet its intended purposes. As the season progresses, the team splits into smaller groups to form different prototypes. Over several weeks, we test each prototype and evaluate the pros and cons of each one. As shown in these videos, most of the prototypes aren't successful or obviously won't be feasible on a robot with a small base. The prototype with the best performance and purest problems tends to be the one for you. Because we have a team of 30 people, we need to divide up our projects into sub-assemblies. Usually, a captain or veteran member leads the group made up of three or four of their students. These groups work independently of each other, creating prototypes, working on the electrical components of the robot, building the frame or wheelbase, and working on applications for awards. As a part of building our robot, we have to fabricate most of the parts ourselves. Our captains take a leading role in showing the younger students how to use the machine shop. We utilize bandsaws, the drill press, lathe, and different types of welders and cutters to fabricate the parts of our robots to the dimensions we need. The sub-assemblies teams come together once they finish their separate jobs and the final robot is built. Different mechanisms are calibrated to work well with each other and final tweaks to the system are made. We have two programmers on our team, one of which is the captain. They write code for the robot to let it accomplish our goal upon manual input. Once the robot is mostly finished, we begin testing it and practicing on the field we create. We give different drivers a chance to drive, and this is also a chance for the programmers to fix bugs and glitches. During competition, we again split into smaller groups. The drive team usually is made up of two to three veteran members, and the newer recruits go to in and out of the veteran matches. Another group goes into the stands and scouts good teams to ally them, or they just watch the matches and report back the strategies that seem to work. A third group stays in the pit area and makes necessary repairs to the robot when it comes off the field. It is our team's ultimate goal to reach the National Robotics Competition. We strive towards making the best robot we can. We also select two of our students for the Regional Dean's List Award. In 2012, one of our members won the Regional Dean's List Award and advanced to the National FRC Competition in St. Louis. This was an amazing accomplishment and has inspired other team members to strive for excellence. After the competition is over, our team elects the new captains for the upcoming year, and awards for our team are handed out. We give out awards with things such as MVP or longevity, which is given to people who are on the team for three to four years. We've had a lot of ups and downs over our first five years. The biggest thing that has come out of those first five years was like those students have come in wrong, and the next generation is incoming to build our future. If you like your gun well, develop your needs and memories, and if you continue to grow, we'll develop Team 3691 for years to come.
Very good. So again, great group of folks and a great group of accomplishments for this time for the board, and wanted to give you an opportunity to not only care about things, but also to see a couple of presentations, one from the news media and one from local students actually creating the documentary in terms of the robotics program. So, again, that is all the announcements I have for tonight.
Okay, thank you. Is there anything anyone would like to add? Okay, we will move on now to our first item for discussion and report. We'll begin with a report on District Technology Steering Committee recommendations. Here to present the report is Kim Briskie, Director of Technology for the District. Kim?
Good evening. Well, I'm really happy to be here tonight. I was talking to Matt a little bit earlier and saying that I see this report as somewhat of a culmination of a lot of work, a lot of conversations, and bringing people in to really get a sense of what it is that we need to do moving forward, and then also as a starting point for that work that is before us in moving forward. So, it is a report that comes from the District Tech Steering Committee, like we said, and we do have a few members of that team present with, looks like we have Rebecca Messer, Amanda Henrich, we've got Amy Sieve here as well. As with my presentation in January where I gave an update on transformational technology, I always like to start with the why and bring us back to why we do any of this in the first place. And so, looking at our mission statement, "The mission of Northfield Public Schools is to deliver educational excellence that empowers all learners to participate in our dynamic world." And it's a nice statement, but looking at the statement and then looking a little bit deeper into it to see what it actually means and what it looks like if you walk that statement out. So, if you've been in my office at all about the first or second day of my employment here, so since July 1st or 2nd of last summer, this has been on the whiteboard on my wall, and it's a reminder to me all the time of what our mission is and what those words actually mean. So I kind of flesh them out and put some synonyms there and some things to guide my thinking while I'm going through the day-to-day, where it can get a little far removed from the mission statement if I don't bring myself back. But also looking at what that mission statement looks like, what those terms mean if we put them into practice. So I want to focus on the what as well. The why is the mission itself. The what is what that actually looks like in our practice. So looking at educational excellence, when we talk about that, first of all, of course, great teachers and pedagogy are at the top of that list. Continuous growth for all. We have a community of learners that are constantly growing. We're providing educational excellence. It means that we make connections to the real world in our learning. It means that we make connections with student interests in our learning, and that we connect learning in one topic, one subject area, one grade level, with learning that's taking place in other areas as well. And then finally, the skills and knowledge for post-secondary success. That is indeed what we are preparing our students for. When we talk about all learners, I think about differentiation of the content that we teach in terms of the resources provided to our students, and then also in terms of how they demonstrate their knowledge, their understanding, their mastery of that content. Opportunities for those who are at the top when we're talking about achievement, those who are ready for enrichment, who've come to us already knowing some of the content that we've determined is essential. What can we do to push them a little bit further and provide ongoing challenge for those students? And then also opportunities for review and reteaching for those students who need a little bit of extra time to grasp the content that we deem is important for them. When we talk about all learners, perhaps the most important piece here is equity and access to the content that we're providing for our learners, that when we determine it's important and that certain set of skills and knowledge are important, that we provide that and make it available to all of them. And then all ages, from our youngest, pre-K even, through our seniors in high school. And then, talking about a learning community, all learners includes those of us who work here and the families as well. We talk about participation in our mission statement, and when we look at what participation looks like in practice when we're talking about student learning, active engagement. We should see our students involved in what they are doing. Involvement even beyond the classrooms. We talk about not just participation, but in our world. If you're participating, you're probably not isolated, so you might be collaborating with others, and learning beyond just the school day and your years of school, that we are preparing our students to participate when they leave us. It means having access to the world around us, and it means that we're contributing to growth and change. It's not something that is happening to us and to our students, but something that we are driving. And then talking about our dynamic world, we do live in a world that is changing. It requires us to be adaptable. It requires that we constantly evaluate information. There is so much information available to us, and part of our, well, one of the biggest skills now is determining which information is valuable and how it's valuable. It means global engagement as interactions with others and competition with others become more of a reality. It means that innovation is the norm for us, it's constant, and that we should be participating in creating something new. And then communication. We've talked about these 21st-century skills, and we've heard some feedback that really those are the skills, they shouldn't be just 21st-century skills, right? They've always been important. But when we talk about communication, I'm looking at reaching either a diverse audience, when we have a message that we would like to be heard by many, or by reaching our targeted audience when we have a message of particular importance for a group of people. And in order to do that, one of the communication skills is helping our information to rise through that information overload that we see all around us. So for a little bit of humor, if you know me, I think you are all starting to know me a little bit. My cup, probably if it's four out of eight ounces, is really three-quarters full. But I did get this from a website called despair.com. So, it says blogging, never before have so many people with so little to say said so much to so few. And I think about it, and it does shed some light on the world that we live in in terms of how many people are participating and how many people are sharing information, the access that we have to share information, and really making sure that the right information gets through. Also, back in January, when I gave that update, I talked about the top 10 skills for success, and we looked at jobs in 2020 and 2030. And this is the list of skills that I brought. Cognitive load management, managing all that information. Computational thinking, cross-cultural competency, design mindset, new media literacy, novel and adaptive thinking, sense-making, social intelligence, transdisciplinary, that connected this piece, and virtual collaboration. Those skills, I think, still hold true along with some others, but we do live in that dynamic world where the skills needed are changing, and we also need to adapt to that. So if the mission is the why, walking out the mission is the what we do, then we look at the how we do that. Clearly, the top of the list, and our going focus on student learning. We also need to focus on professional development, ensuring that our teachers, our staff, are ready to support our students in that learning. And then lastly, I've put on here, provide a common tool for all of our teachers and students. And that tool is about accessing the information and the course content that we're teaching, and then also about having the ability to create and share the learning that's going on in the classroom. So that brings us to the transformational technology recommendation, and I want to touch a little bit on that recommendation and the process for it, although I know you're aware of many steps of that process. But going back to January, when I came and gave the update on transformational technology, following that update, we had a total of 12 listening sessions in each of our schools and then also for community members. We had four Chromebook demos at the middle school and at the high school, and those were in response to teachers requesting other devices and taking a look at what other devices might look like. We had two District Tech Steering Committee meetings to look at all of the information gathered and determine the best steps moving forward. And then I have had more conversations with Val Murdistorf than I have had since I began this job. And they've been good conversations, but conversations with Val and conversations with vendors to make sure that the recommendation that we are making is financially responsible and feasible, and in those conversations, it is. And then finally, idea sharing with other districts, participating with a group of tech integrationists from southeast Minnesota as well as a group from the metro area, groups that are looking at different implementations of technology, getting some of the pros and cons, some of the challenges and some of the successes, and looking at what we can do to move forward in the best possible manner. So some of the changes that we're recommending are not about the device, but about our program itself. And when we look at our program and look at the feedback that we received from families and from staff, the top one, as we brought forth in February, or in March, actually, there was, was restricted app store access. Distractibility was a concern for many, and so going into the next school year, we do intend to close down the app store, which becomes a possibility with the new management software that we'll be using. Also with that management software, we're looking to implement Casper Focus, which is a classroom management tool allowing teachers to lock students into a particular app or to lock students into a particular website. It's flexible enough to make that a different app or different website for individual students in the room. It's flexible enough to allow students to work on their own as others are working in a particular app, which should help with some of the distractibility in class. We've heard that courses where they do a lot of writing are looking for a stronger tool, a more robust tool for the writing projects. And while the iPads were never intended to replace computer labs and what we do on a computer, many are using them for an extensive amount of writing. And so in that, in order to respond to those, we've decided that providing sets of wired keyboards that could be checked out to classrooms would be helpful. We're also looking at potential wireless printing solutions, and we do have a solution that will work. We've been testing it here at the high school. Would allow students in every building to print from the media center printer right from their iPads. And then finally, formatting considerations there. Several teachers brought forth that Google Docs does not do exactly what they would like, particularly with MLA formatting. It's pretty small pieces, but we did look into Microsoft Office Online and the availability of that tool. It's not something that we're looking at right now as a district-wide account, but it is something that you can set up free accounts for, and we would support teachers with that. We also heard from families that they want to know more about technology, about the iPads, about Schoology, about what students are doing, about management of technology at home. And so I will be starting to send some updates to families on a regular basis that include information just to help parents understand a little bit more about the technology we're using. And the final piece that we're recommending tonight is to discontinue the use of our proxy server, which filters from off-campus. We're not looking at discontinuing our internet filter here on campus by any means, but the proxy filter, what it does is it takes on only the district iPads and filters them back through our school internet when they're off-site. And it's a hard one because it has blocked some things that we really want students to access, like Schoology quizzes or the syncing of some Google Drive files. And at times, it goes down, and then either Nate Knudsen or myself needs to be available to actually restart it. It's a simple piece, but it's a matter of the availability. During the school day, that's a pretty simple email or text message, and then on the weekend, it's a little bit longer to know, oh, this is down. And if it's down, it means zero internet for any of our iPads. So that one, and then when we talk about filtering from home, we would definitely provide some resources for setting up filters on home networks, which could be done by parents to filter any devices on those networks. But also, I look at students and I see that most of them have another internet-enabled device. So even here at school, if you walk through the hallway, you'll see students using their iPhones. Those are not filtered by our filtering service, and I think that's the case for most of them at home as well. Definitely not all, but for many. Getting to the iPad recommendation portion here, we're looking at a three-phase lease renewal. And all of these leases are a 4-3 lease. That means that they're a four-year term with the opportunity to renew at 3. And so, in the three steps, the first step would happen this summer, and that would be a lease of iPad Mini 2s. It would provide enough, it would be 910 iPad Mini 2s. It would be enough for each of our 4th and 5th grade to move to one-to-one devices that would stay at home, sorry, not at home, that would stay at school. You could say that in the right order. And then for staff as well. Now, the mini would be a different device for staff, and it would be temporary until another iPad would be available for them if they would choose. So that second part of the lease would get 2,650 iPad Air 2s. That's right now the most current iPad. And that lease would be delivered in January of 2016, so in the middle of the school year. The payment for that would be deferred until July of 2016, so it would go on to fiscal year '17. That would provide one iPad for every 6th through 12th grader, and also for each staff member if they would like to change from the mini that was provided in the summer. And that distribution, what happens with that, I'll get to a little bit more on why that is. But it's basically based on the fact that with the history of Apple, every fall, a new iPad is released, a new operating system is released, and then the current devices drop in price. So that iPad Air 2 right now is a little bit far, it's a little bit out of our reach financially. But the longevity of the device might be worth holding off for six months in order to get a better device. The distribution could happen gradually. It wouldn't have to happen immediately in January when they arrive. Staff could even determine, I'm going to wait until the end of the year and change out when I'm not teaching. Then the final piece is a smaller piece. It's 250 iPad Mini 2s, and that lease would put each of our elementary K-3 classes at a one iPad per every two students moving forward in the 16th to 17th school year. And the way that it gets And the way that it gets, that, that would then replace the current student lease, which would expire in next summer, and combined with the staff minis that would be traded out for iPad Air 2s, that would provide enough of those iPads for our K3 classroom. When we talk about fiscal stewardship, we looked at many options here. We looked at the 4-3 option, the four-year with the option to renew at 3. We looked at a three-year with the option to renew at 2, or the three-year fair market value lease, which is what we currently have. I can tell you more about those if you have questions about them. Basically, the 4-3 and the 3-2 give you quite a bit of flexibility to even go about, like, month by month on the lease, once you hit that three-year or the two-year mark on them. They also allow you to leverage the value, the residual value of the iPads when making your final lease payment. So should we terminate the lease before the fourth year, you could, you could use the residual value to make that final payment. In estimating with Apple, they say that typically after three years, they can give just over 30%, I think 33% is what they, what they estimated of the residual value, and we would need about 26% to pay off that lease. We did look at options from other companies, looking at refurbished iPads. We were unable to match the pricing from Apple or the device options. And we looked at an option of an iPad Mini, which would save significant funding. However, we heard in our listening sessions that people, particularly in the secondary schools, preferred the larger screen. Staff will receive an iPad Mini 2 temporarily in this plan, but that is based, again, on the projection that the iPad Air 2 will become available to us at a lower price point, and that that one will last longer in the long term of this lease. And so they would be able to switch out that iPad Mini. That option to begin in January does a couple of things. At first, I was, I was leery of it, but what it does is it provides us that newer device just shortly after the current latest device moves down in price. And so that, that after a new iPad is released, about two months later, we would have the previous latest and greatest, is kind of how that works. And that option is really nice for us in a couple of ways. A, we don't have to pay for it right away, which is great. It replaces those iPad 2s mid-year. iPad 2s, we are pretty certain are not going to update to iOS 9, and that will come out in the fall, and so initially, they should function just fine. However, over time, the apps typically update and require an update on the operating system in order to function to their full potential. And so having another device here and ready to say, yep, we can switch these out so that we get full functionality of our, of our iPads would be, would be a benefit. I mentioned already the flexibility in the lease term that allows us to go even to month by month, if we're using that 4-3 option, but also the mid-year option may give us a higher residual value. Now, this is something that I think keep in the back of our minds. My goal with these leases is to line up the endpoint at July of 2019. But being 4-3 leases, we do have some flexibility to look at that mid-year timing, and then the residual value on those iPads is higher, because the market isn't flooded with all of the educational system iPads coming back in at lower, or that lower used rates, basically. So there's a few of the reasons on the tools. When you get to the numbers, I have a few slides here that look at the numbers of this proposal. Looking at the next school year, 2015 to 16, would be fiscal year 16, we have our current student lease still in that fiscal year, and then that first phase of iPad minis would go there. And you can see the numbers there, I totaled them on the next slide, so you don't need to do a lot of math in your head. Looking at 2016 to 17, and then each of the following years there for three years, we would have the first phase of the lease, those minis coming this, this summer. We would have that mid-year lease, which is the biggest portion of the iPad Air 2s for the secondary students and the staff. And then the following summer, we would get that smaller lease of iPad minis to fill in the K3 classrooms at one for every two students. So like I said, those are totaled in the top line there. So at the top line, you see the total iPad lease cost, demonstrated from the previous slide. You also see the Casper management system there, and I put a little asterisk by the management system, because I grouped these numbers intending to take the entire expense out of our current capital approvals for our, for our iPad lease. However, that Casper MDM could also come out of our transformational technology budget, which in this plan is not touched right now. That red number, I'm going to come back to in just a moment. The bottom line is the total expenditure for our management system and our iPad lease for each of the next four fiscal years. Now, that red number, the 137.1, this is, this gets into accounting rules. Like I said, I've had some meetings with Val. If I go back to this previous slide one time, you see that 274.2 for the mid-year lease. Because of accounting rules, we've talked to our auditor, we need to, even though we're not paying for that until July of 2016, because we take possession of the devices during the, during the previous fiscal year, we need to account for half of that expense during the previous fiscal year. So back to that red number, the 137.1 would be something that we would account for in our bookkeeping, but not actually pay out during the fiscal year 16. So Val could come and present our capital fund balance and show that 137.1 was taken out for the iPad lease, however, the money would not actually be spent until the following year. So it's, when I look at it, I call it the ultimate responsibility of booking our expense before we actually spend the money. And then the total expenditures, you can see, moving forward, after we end our current student lease, we look at a total expenditure for the lease and the management system of 385.9. That stays pretty similar to our current expenditures that showed on the next slide, although it gets us about 800 additional iPads, and it, and it adds in the management system for all of our district iPads. The capital budget for the following, for the coming year is $415,000 for the iPad lease. And so when we look at it for next year, we're slightly over that. Again, we can use some of that transformational technology budget to cover the Casper management system, but when you look at the coming years, where our capital projections might need a little help in what we actually budget, we're coming in under. And so I'm, I'm pretty pleased with how that works out, and that is a result of that 4-3 lease option, which is a new option for us. So I did a cost comparison, looking at current year, 1415, and then moving forward for the next three. And you can see here outlined our student iPad lease, our staff iPad lease, the management system, and then the total expenditure. So you see the same bottom line expenditure for 15, 16, 16, 17, and 17, 18 as the previous slide. And then you see our this year's expenditure, which is at 381.6. So what we're doing is, the way I see it, managing to provide more technology, managing to provide a better management system and for more iPads, and managing to keep the finances fairly level over the course of that. I will point out here, too, the staff lease. Right now, it's at $41,000, and that lease adds in 50 devices, just so that we have a little bit more flexibility, and also still drops in the overall cost. And then I talked a little bit about the devices, but the iPad 2, we're looking at, not necessarily updating to iOS 9, we're pretty sure that announcement, announcement will be made. Our iPad minis that we have currently will update to iOS 9, so they will still function really well through the next year. They will go back at the end of the next year. And then the devices that we're looking at, we've seen are on the very far right, highlighted in green here, the iPad Air 2 and the iPad Mini 2. And so I won't go into great, great detail in the technical specifications of all the devices, but I will let you know that I did some pretty deep looking into the history of the iPads and what processors and chips they have, and how long they have lasted. And I'm assuming that we need these to last until iOS 12, so if any of you follow that, that sounds like a big number right now, when we talk about our operating systems for our iPads. This is based, you can see the iPad Air 2 cost at 474 per device. My proposal is based on that dropping to 374, which is the current iPad Air 1 price. Now for the more important piece. When you talk about this technology and what you might do with it, we can get bogged down in the actual technology, not what you do with it, and I really want to focus on what we would do with it, the why, back to the why. So I asked some teachers, what is your vision for enhancing learning with technology? And here's some quotes for you. We heard from Nancy Fox and Becky Har. Every child would have access at any time. We see it as a way of meeting the needs of 27 different learners. And what Becky and Nancy are doing, the fourth-grade teachers at Sibley, is they're flipping their math lessons, and so they're providing videos, they've made video mini lessons of everyday math, and students can get them for enrichment or for review, or if they're absent, they perceive immediate assessment feedback, being able to do some data analysis to guide their instruction, and sharing projects with families. I talked to Kim Sluggers here at the high school, and she said, I want my physical classroom to be set up differently. I think it will help students to feel like they have control and choice, and the learning becomes really rich. And Kim is looking at doing quite a few different things. She sees herself as a facilitator of learning, allowing maybe for some classroom centers to help students pace through and to access the resources that they need and to facilitate the higher-order thinking of that, of processing that information. I talked to Jan Endru, seventh-grade English teacher at the middle school, and she said, I see myself using this tool in many ways to impact students' writing. This was a game changer for me this year. I was able to have real-time access to my students' writing as they worked. The iPad has become an invaluable tool in my classroom. And Jan, she gets pretty excited when she talks about this, because what she was doing was interacting with her students during the drafting process, giving them timely feedback. And so instead of a stack of drafts that she graded, she had already gone through and read what they had said, and then they turned it into a much more polished final product. Another thing that Jan has done is some online discussions with Schoology, and this one's cool, because she's taken the, the high achievers from different hours of the day. So she has one student who really excels in her first hour, one in third, one in fifth, however it falls out, and she puts them into a Schoology group to discuss their current literature. And so those students have the opportunity during their class time to discuss with other students who are not there, but are, are adding to it later in the day. Tiffany Malika, kindergarten teacher at Greenville, said, I would love to have one-to-one or one-to-two iPads someday, even at this kindergarten level. I believe it offers students so many opportunities. More students would be informed about technology and a safe environment if we give them this opportunity and allow them to explore hands-on while we're there. I think Tiffany has tried everything, she's the only teacher I know that's tried all 95,000 education apps. But she's doing, she's doing quite a bit, I advanced that a little bit too, too soon, but you know, she's, she's using it basically every day, having her kindergarteners on QR code scavenger hunts and getting clues to find the next, the next point in the hunt. She's got kindergarteners creating movies and books based on videos and photos that they're taking of the learning that's going on in the classroom, FaceTiming with other classes to do read-alouds, and having mystery readers visit the class virtually to share with them. Dusty Armstrong, fourth-grade teacher and media specialist at Bridgewater, said, my vision for technology includes incorporating it in everyday lessons as a tool to modify, enrich, differentiate, and enhance lessons for each individual student. Dusty's got a classroom blog. She told a story of, of a student over spring break going to the blog and writing a book review, and getting feedback from other students right during break. And then she spoke of that high level of passion and interest to use the technology to interact with students and not wait until we're back in class, but do that over break. Jackie Magnuson, fax teacher at the middle school, said, my goal has been using visuals. It's much more interactive and engaging. My students want to plan less and cook more. She actually said eat more, too. She said, using visuals, they can get a lot of the information ahead of time, and we can go much faster. They don't even realize that they're doing the planning part, they feel like it's less, and that they're really just in-class, hands-on the whole time. So she's been using visuals for review and enrichment, really trying some new things out, getting excited about what she can do. And finally, Carleen Sherman said these things, she's a special education teacher at Sibley. She said, one way I hope to enhance student learning is by increasing the communication between the resource room, the classroom, and the students' parents. I've been doing that and hope to do more through a digital portfolio. So Carleen is using pictures of math projects or written assignments, she's uploading them to a digital, a digital space. She's using videos through Adobe Voice and Telegami, where students are creating book summaries or persuasive writing assignments. And then she records them reading and demonstrates their reading fluency for parents who don't always see that face-to-face. And so she's able to share that with the classroom teacher over time, she's able to show growth from the start of the year to the end, and then she can share that at IEP meetings as well, so, some of those uses. And that's what I've got for you, so I'm guessing there are maybe a couple of questions.
Okay, thank you. So board members, questions, comments? Anne?
I have a comment. This presentation was just great. I really feel I know what's going on, and I appreciate the whole PowerPoint and the focus on what the teachers are saying, what the students are saying, what the parents are saying, and I think you're doing a great job of communicating this effort, and I applaud you for that.
Thanks, Anne.
Other questions? Ellen?
So I had questions on two different issues. One is just trying to understand the cost. So does this, these are the cost of the actual devices, does it include the cases as well?
It does.
And how about professional development? Or apps? Will it sort of the other?
Yeah, so, right now, we have a transformational technology budget that is separate of capital. So I looked at capital budget in the actual larger expenses of the devices and the management system. The transformational technology budget will still be in place, as far as I know, I can, I didn't question that. But it's a budget that we have not come close to spending yet. It provides for textbooks and supplies, which would include apps, and I particularly see the need for purchasing some apps for those elementary iPads, because those teachers have been more on their own in a personal model, in using six iPads, and so that, that worked starting out, and if you go to more iPads, that's not going to work, we're going to need to purchase apps for each of those. And so I met with the media specialists in their PLC time to look at, how could we determine the apps that would be needed and ensure that we will be able to purchase some apps for those, particularly those ones, and some, and our secondaries, of course, we would still potentially need some extras.
Yes, go ahead. So then I had an implementation question, which I'm guessing, this is such a thorough presentation, that you probably have already thought through this, but the whole idea of the secondary students having a different device than the, than the teachers are going to have at the beginning of the year, is that, should be texted out, and it doesn't seem like it's going to be a big issue, or it's just a different screen size?
Yeah, really, it is just a different screen size. So the, the operating system, it will update further than the students, but by the time that update is really pertinent, we would have different devices for the students as well. Thank you. You're welcome.
Other questions of board members? Jeff?
Is Apple pretty much controlling this whole process as far as domination in the schools, for lack of a better expression? I mean, are there Android options, or do you think anything in the future that's going to be a combination that will be used, or is it Apple or nothing?
Right now, I would say it's Apple or nothing. There are Android options, I haven't seen them adopted in a school yet, partially because of the management needs of an Android device that aren't available, actually, to manage them large-scale in a school setting. And I would say also partially because of the availability of apps for those devices.
In other words, they're way behind.
If I turn my mic on here, I think on the tablet side, the Android is, is, there just aren't many schools who have adopted that, if any, because really, it's the wild, wild west, there isn't a lot of, the alternate is the Chromebook. That's what you're seeing. Schools are picking typically either a Chromebook or an iPad. And we did bring Chromebooks in, and they, we do have about 20 of those in the district, and they serve a very good need in various, in various areas, but we heard from a number of people wanting to make sure we have the flexibility of that tablet device for our non-quarterarys, such as art and some of those other areas that maybe aren't as traditional in how they use the technology. But we have talked about the concept of, as well, of looking at some Chromebook carts down the line to support those areas that want that richer word processing experience, along with looking at the Microsoft Office that Kim said, and some of those classes, wired keyboards.
Durability was another aspect of looking at Chromebooks, too.
Other questions or comments? No? Oh, I'm sorry.
I'll pass.
Okay.
Nice report.
I, I had two questions. I wanted to talk a little bit about the Casper management system. So when you talk about having the control over the apps, if a student were to be doing a project and find a, a free app that they would find beneficial, would, is there ways a project and find a free app that they would find beneficial, is there ways for that student to have access to the app? Have you thought through how that might work in terms of opportunity for students?
We have tried to think through how that might work. I think there are some options for that, and I don't fully know what they are at this point in time. I know Matt's last, my last presentation, when he said, "Tell them about the Beacon." The Beacon is cool. Location-enabled, so there would be the option. The Beacon can carry, like, management profiles for the iPads. And so, and it can turn on and off, so it can be for a very short time period in undisclosed location. But a tool that we would be able to use, so you say, in the media center even, a student comes in and says, "Here's this app I want to have." I think we would have the ability to do that. However, the media center is a pretty public space, and I think it might cause a little bit of a frenzy if people opened up their iPad and went, "Wow, my app store's back." And so looking at how that works in practice and maybe where those spaces and what those timings might be in order to enable that is a question that we have. Looking at a classroom, I think it would be, from what I understand, they can have a range of, say, 90 feet, but that you can actually turn that down to be more like 10 feet. And in a classroom environment where you have a teacher who says, "You know, I'd really like my students to use this app," I think that's a really, really good option to go into that classroom with a device that says, "Hey, I can open you up right now because you're within a few feet of me, and go ahead and get the app that you need."
Okay, good. Then within that management system, so how I understand it is that a teacher would have direct control over what apps were able to be accessed by a student during their given time period, during their given class?
Right. So how I understand that this works is it integrates with Skyward. Teacher would pull up their app on their iPad, tap the class that they're in, get a little box that shows each of the students enrolled in that class. It would include students who are not on campus. So they would say, you know, there could be a student on a trip to Chicago, and they tap them into their management system and say, "Hey, you're joining us for this discussion during this time," or whatnot. They could also dismiss that student from being locked in. So it's not based on location, it's not based on being on the same network, it's based on enrollment in the class. It does have a teacher override code, so the next teacher, say, everybody, you know, it's the end of the class and you finish up pretty quickly, and everybody leaves, and it's a whirlwind of activity, and you didn't get let out of the app that you were in, the next teacher can override that by turning it on in their class and choosing a different app. And it's time-bound, so at the end of the school day, we would set the limits on it that say it runs during the school hours and not outside of them. So the kid that goes home and didn't get let out of their app is not going to be stuck there for the whole night.
What else I think is important, they wouldn't have to do it that way. If they wanted to do it, they could enable it, but there's, I see it really being two layers of management. One is, the district gets to set the apps that are in the school app store. So in terms of the kinds of apps that students could have access to, they're pre-approved. So even in your example of where a student finds a free one, I could envision us having a Google form that the student fills out and say, "Hey, I'd like to have this app." It would go to Kim, she would go to the Northfield store, and then students could download that. So they would still have those closer, tighter parameters within that, and then if a teacher wanted to go one step further during their class, they could. So it's not an all or nothing. You know, it's kind of a couple of different steps based on what the appropriate activity is for the day.
So this Casper management system, would that become effective at the start of the next school year, regardless of what devices were?
We are actually in the process of starting it right now.
Okay.
So that we're ready for it. It's not something that we will enroll our devices in, because that would be a pretty major process for the end of the year, and it's not all set up yet. But we are working with them right now to get it set up so that it's ready to go, say, start up the summer.
Wonderful. That's wonderful. And then just one last question. Do you anticipate the training that will be involved for staff to learn how to use this stuff? Is it somewhat user-friendly?
I think it's pretty user-friendly. I do envision quite a bit of training, not just on Casper. I think that's a piece that will have some training. But I think it'll be pretty easy. I think it's a matter of installing the right app, tapping on it, tapping the class period that you're in and seeing the students. And once you tap, and once you select the students, it like brings up a menu of options. So we saw it work in a demonstration, and went, "Well, that's easy." If there were ever an instance for the easy button that's in Dr. Richardson's office.
I have one. That's easy. I think the power, though, of what you've seen is the fact that with listening to staff and listening to parents and looking at how quickly the technology has evolved, obviously we have, you know, the systems available now to do all the things that people have shared. I've got a concern about the Wild West of any app you want, anytime. I've got the concern about making sure that, at least during the times when students are in my class, they're focused on the apps that I want them to focus on. And being able to do that now in comparison to what we could do even a year ago is kind of a light-years modification. And I think that it does address a number of the pieces that I think that people expressed to us in terms of concern. I think the most powerful piece, though, of this is that, again, the focus has been on learning. The focus has been on how do we expand learning opportunities for all of our kids? And the focus is, you know, we know that we have groups of kids that are not involved in the way we'd like them to be because the technology isn't there for them. The fourth and fifth grade students, where teachers are really clamoring for, "We need a device in the hands of every kid during the day. We don't want to send them home, but we really would like the options for kids to use them." And from our primary teacher saying, "We thought we might be able to be fine with a group of six iPads for 20 or 24 kids, but it doesn't work that way when some kids have the availability to do things and others don't." And so the power of this is, for really the same dollars, we're going to have a system that basically has 800 more devices available. So we're really addressing one-to-two for all of our primary kids, one-to-one for our fourth and fifth graders, and one-to-one for all of our graders, all of our students in grades six through 12. So I think we're really getting close to realizing the promise of having the technology in everyone's hand. And that's the power, I think, of this thing. And I think a really strong response on the part of the folks working with technology to think about and respond to what teachers are saying, what parents are saying. I'm not sure that students are necessarily saying, "Shut down the App Store," and whatever. I'm looking out here to see if anybody's going, "Ah, shut down the App Store." But I think the reality is, being able to get the system so that it gives the broadest capabilities of getting to information that we can do, but also giving us some controls to avoid the situations where people were saying, "I'm really concerned about how distracted my students are," or the fact that they're on things that they shouldn't be on, and I want to have control as a teacher. I think we're now in a position where we can do both pieces. So I really appreciate all of the work that Kim's done with this, and I really appreciate the very creative way she's attacked the funding piece and attacked the how do we get where we need to go. I'd also mention the fact on the Chromebooks, and again, we did get those out so people could test them, that some of the initial feedback we got from folks was people thought Chromebooks were laptops. So the immediate thing they were looking for is, well, it's not running an Apple system, it's running something else. And so they were thinking they were going to get this much more sophisticated word processing program and the ability to do all sorts of other things. And what they realized in the end is, it runs the same Google apps for a word processing program as the Apple equipment does. So it's really the idea that, for that piece, when our secondary staff are saying, "For some of us, we really need a much more sophisticated word processing system," it's the idea of adding on a different kind of word processing app and then also providing the keyboard so we can get the work done.
Just to clarify.
Yeah, please.
It is a bit more robust on the document side, on Google Docs, the Chromebook is. But there were some misconceptions about being able to install Microsoft Office on it, or that it didn't have games. And those things were misconceptions. And then also, I appreciate all of your kind words, and I also thank our district tech steering committee for their work on this. We had an extra meeting in putting this together, or shifted meeting schedule, an extra-long meeting. So they put in some work and gave really great, really great feedback to the options that were out there. And then also, to end with, we'll be looking for a vote on this one. And so looking for that at the next meeting on the 27th.
Okay. Does anyone have any last comments or questions? Okay. Thank you.
Yes, thank you.
Next, we'll move on to another item for discussion and report, and we have Mark Hayes from ATS and R. Mark is here tonight to provide the board with updated recommendations for the proposed Longfellow, Greenville Park, and high school facilities.
Exactly. Thank you. Good evening. So yes, I'm here, really it's somewhat of a follow-up, an amendment to the district-wide facilities master plan that we presented, or that I presented, at the February 23rd board meeting. And I'm not going to go through that entire master plan presentation.
Come back and do that again.
It wasn't eaten the first time.
Yeah, well, I see Jackie wasn't here. She might want to hear the rest. Okay.
But, so yeah, there was some questions raised at the February 23rd board meeting, so we came back with some additional information on that. And then there's been some additional discussion since that report was presented. And so I've called this Approach Three. Now, I do believe that really a couple of these buildings, the modifications that we've modified, and I think really could be considered a modification to Approach Two, but I've just lumped everything in as Approach Three. Okay. So with that being said, I know that all board members have a copy of this. I'm going to just start with the site plan of Longfellow. And this was, Longfellow at Approach Two, if you remember, was to convert Longfellow to keep the ALC, but convert this to the district office. And originally, we had planned on adding some parking. Right now, I took out the additional parking, so that went away. And then I'm going to skip to the upper-level plan, the ground-level plan. If you remember, in Approach Two, on the main level, we were taking the ALC, I mean, we're taking the gymnasium, and we're going to convert that to the boardroom and staff development space. And then where it says, "VIAED STOREG," that was going to be additional kind of district record storage-type space. Well, after some discussion, the idea was, it might be more prudent to keep that gymnasium for the ALC students and not remodel that to be the boardroom, staff development-type space. So we left that gymnasium space as-is. And then what we did was, we went down to the lower level, and that's where currently there's some infant toddler spaces. And there, the idea now was, it might be, make more sense to, again, take those students, those early childhood students, and put them over at Greenville Park, where we had the idea of, let's put all the adult basic ed, the early childhood, put all those programs in the one building. And initially, the thought was that it might be wise to keep the infant toddler spaces there to help maybe if it fits the need for the ALC students, was why we kept it there. But I think after additional thought, discussion, the idea was, it probably makes more sense to move those students over to Greenville Park. So therefore, kept the gymnasium upstairs for the ALC, and then remodeled that lower-level space that used to be infant toddlers, and made that the staff development, boardroom space. And then we did need some additional storage, and so we just said the space across the hall, that currently is kind of a large muscle, kind of a serving space for the students, the early childhood students. We said that could be some district storage, record storage, some of those things. So really, we really just, you know, moved the staff development, boardroom space from upstairs to down below. From a cost standpoint, really it didn't change any other than, when I took out that additional parking, it saved about $100,000. So that number, it did go down about $100,000 from the last time you saw this. Then, as I said, you know, we then looked at taking that infant toddler space that was at the, at Longfellow, and moving that into the Greenville Park facility. And, you know, we had already, we had already essentially kind of doubled the amount of early childhood program space over at Greenville Park. So I didn't necessarily add any more space because we already were adding a lot of that program space over there. The one thing that did come up, though, was that there is a code aspect with the younger students. And it gets into the code whether or not the space is identified as an I-4 or an E, which is educational. And if it's classified as an I-4, then you need a fire separation between the I-4 and the E. However, by putting an exterior door into the infant and toddler spaces, we were able to not have to call it an I-4 and don't have to do as much interior upgrades and creating separate spaces, et cetera. And the infant and toddler spaces also need toilet facilities. And so that's why what I did is, I kept the infant toddlers where I had them before, but I just added an exterior door. Okay? That's all I did. It'll need a stoop and, you know, concrete footing, and so that doesn't eep so you can get out the door. But I just added an exterior door at each one of those infant toddler spaces. So I increased this project here by $100,000 to add those four exterior doors. And keep in mind, these are project costs. That's not the construction cost. Then there was additional discussion about, well, maybe the governor, maybe the state will start maybe adding Universal Four program space, and where might that go? Well, if that happened in the future, because this is a long-range plan, right? It's like, it makes sense that that would happen at this facility. So I didn't do any cost estimates, but, you know, what could happen if that program was added? And I don't think we know yet if it's going to be all day, or half-day, or how that'll work. So I just looked at a couple of options here, and I said, and this is similar to what I looked at under the Approach Number One, where we're looking at doing an addition to that upper-right corner. So I kind of thought the same thing could happen, is that we could add some program space by adding maybe a two-classroom addition to the west, and maybe another one to the lower-left-hand corner. You know, maybe you could gain, you know, approximately four classroom spaces if you needed. It really wouldn't even impact these doors that we added out of the infant toddler spaces. From a site standpoint, as before, it really has fairly minimal impact on the site. You can see those red rectangles is where those additions could go. And then if we needed to accommodate even additional students, say, six to seven classrooms, you know, again, the thought here is just extending something over to the west, to the left, and connecting links, and really just a single-loaded corridor, adding the classrooms to the west-hand, the left or west side, still maintaining natural light to those existing classrooms. You know, could it be done? I believe you could do it. Don't want to get into the specifics about, well, if we created a courtyard like I'm showing, can we exit out of the courtyard? Yes, you can. Yes, you can. I don't want to get into too much detail. There starts to be exiting issues and things, but you could, you could exit through the courtyard, through the connecting link, and get out of the building. So this is really to show that I think we could accommodate the Universal Four program if that were to come forward in the future. Again, site impact, you know, we start to move fairly close to that ball field to the west. You know, can we maintain that walkway that occurs right now on the west side of the existing building? Not positive, but I think we could make it work. And then, so really, really what we wanted to do was take a look at the existing high school, and is there a way to try and utilize a portion of that existing high school, repurpose that existing high school portion for some other function, some other activity? And just taking a look at that. Again, big picture, the long-range plan is really to try to incorporate all of the early childhood, adult basic ed, some of those activities at Greenville Park. And then, of course, building the new elementary school on that same site over to the east. So looking at it, I didn't really think that we needed to try to maintain any existing classroom or office space, but what I came up with was that maybe the best utilization of an existing high school, and I'm going to jump to the second slide here, is I looked at, if you can see this, this is your existing high school, and then it shows the year that each addition was built. So again, you got the main cross, if you will, was all built in 1964, about 50, 51 years ago. Addition to the northwest, 1970, kind of the district office wing, 1997, and then, of course, the auditorium and the cafeteria. Concessions area was built in 2002. So what I came up with was maybe the best utilization of keeping that existing, portion of that existing high school. of that existing high school, was try to use, use the areas that I outlined with the heavy red dash as an activity, athletic, community-type center space, where you could use that existing auditorium. And I'll keep in mind, that auditorium serves about 320-some students. You know, I'm not saying that that takes the place of the auditorium at the new high school, because that auditorium would be larger to serve, you know, at least, at least one grade level of students at the high school. But keeping that auditorium, keeping that new cafeteria, keeping that existing concessions area outside, and also keeping the gymnasium, was the thought. Seems like you could always use additional athletic, biad-type spaces. So I kept, those were the spaces that I kept. And then I shaded everything else in green, that'd be demolished, and then we'd start to turn that over into the ball field spaces that we need. So, if you take a look at, you know, how that looks, well, again, this is, this is the existing building, all the different wings and the sprawling corridors, et cetera. And so I really just tried to keep that lower portion. Auditorium, cafeteria, gymnasium, fitness rooms that you've got, that new girls locker room over to the right, lower right-hand corner, I kept that. And I said this could be used as an activity athletic-type facility, is what I did. You know, some, some specifics are that I'm getting rid of the existing boiler room. I believe those boilers are likely original, I think. But I, and then what I do is I was going to take over some of that existing custodial space, that long gray rectangle to the north and south, take over some of that, and like it says, put in some high-efficiency boilers. Then you'd want to convert the remaining portion of the building to DDC controls instead of the new Nomatics that they currently have. You'd need to do things like, well, now we need to, you know, bring in electrical service and some electrical switchgear to serve this portion of the building that's going to remain. And then you need to make sure too, that you kind of locate the head-end for the security system, and the intercom, and some of those sorts of infrastructure devices. We need to bring those back into this part that's going to remain. So that's those first four or five items. And then lastly, I still put money in there to upgrade those locker rooms, because they still are not handicap accessible, hard to supervise, et cetera. And we'd still want to do some upgrades to those locker rooms. I think if this is going to be used for athletics, for activities, things like that. I did not feel the need, if you remember, to add an additional elevator, if you remember that, to get over to the left-hand side. My thought being that, you know, right now, you're walking through the upper level, which is currently, I think it's the dance studio. Well, my thought was maybe it no longer is the dance studio. Now it's not so bad to be cutting through some of those sorts of spaces. So I didn't include some of those other things that I had done when I was looking at some of these upgrades to the existing high school. And then, so again, that's that overall kind of site plan, showing the different years of the additions. And then I put this slide back in, because this is the slide that I shared in the report about if we did just the new high school at the southeast corner of the site, you know, how might that work? And then, so this was the plan, and you can see that we had the two kind of soccer lacrosse fields in there, and we had the three ball fields, two softball and one baseball field, essentially. If we, if we kept that portion of the high school, what would that look like? So we left that, we left that area, I put that in there in orange, and I think we could fit these spaces on that site. Now, if you're really paying attention, you'd notice that I mentioned there's that little gray area that I was trying to keep that extends to the north. Well, I don't show that shown on here right now. I think, I think between maybe removing part of that extension to the north, that custodial area, the receiving area that's there now, we'd keep that receiving area, and taking that ball field, and maybe trying to scooch a little bit more to the northeast, I think it could work. So, this really just shows that, that we, overall, from the previous option, we'd lose, we'd probably just lose a ball field, is the thought, is my study. If you can see that, I took that soccer field lacrosse field, I slid that up to the north, and we really lost that one ball field in the upper left corner. That's right there. So what happens in terms of Approach 3, the differences between Approach 2 that I shared with you last time? The only difference again is looking at, on the very left-hand side, I'm sorry, on the very right-hand side under District. The only changes made is Longfellow is the one where we're doing a little bit less work there. That went from .7 million to .6. The Greenville Park, because of really those exterior doors, went from .6 to .7. That was basically a wash. But the really thing, the thing that I did keep that changed is the one about the grades nine through 12. So, under Northfield High School, I now talk about repurposing that facility for activity athletics. On the previous slide, demolition of that old high school is $4 million. So we're saving $1 million by not demolishing as much of it. I'm keeping about 83,000 square feet, so we're not demolishing as much. But, to make those modifications and some of the remodeling that I mentioned, that's $4.5 million. So, net change from Approach 2 to Approach 3 is 3.5 million. So that number at the total, under that third column, which now says 82 million, used to say 78.5 million. So about a net add of, of 3.5 million to try to, you know, try to keep a good portion of that high school there for some other adaptive type reuse. And I think that was, I think that was the end of what I wanted to share with you. So I think, I was saying, I think this could be something that could be like an amendment potentially to that, to the master plan study. Any thoughts, questions?
Board members' questions? Jeff?
We're ideally in a school district our size, the size that you've put the district office. I'm just wondering, are we making that decision based on space, or, you know?
Ideally, a district your size. I'm just trying to think of where they are at other, at other facilities. I mean, a lot of times, a lot of times, they're freestanding facilities, you know what I mean? Which is kind of like what we're doing here, except the ALC is part of it, you know?
Did to give you a sense, just thinking around the big nine? Austin is, is part of the high school. Owatonna is a freestanding structure. Faribault is a freestanding structure that is now going to move in and be back in, on the high school property with some new construction. Albert Lee, I believe, is, is part of the school buildings. Obviously, Rochester has its own district office, but they're talking about not doing some additions to it to also provide potentially some early childhood programming space. Winona? I don't know. I honestly don't know. I think the key piece that, at least I've heard Jeff, in the last 11 years I've been here, is people really like the idea of the district office continuing to be in a building where there are kids. And it not only is for the, be someone that has kids, so you keep remembering what it is you're doing, but also, there is a difference in terms of how you can fund repairs to the building if you're co-located where kids are. So, with the district office currently at the high school, if we have to do repairs to the district office, that's, it's eligible to use funding that we would use for other capital projects. When you do a standalone district office space, you actually have to treat it differently because there are no kids there, and therefore, your ability to, if you were renting it or leasing it, you can't use lease levy money like you would do normally. So it really is probably a real disadvantage, I think, in most cases, to have a separate district office. And obviously, in the proposal we have, we're, we're taking over that first four of Longfellow, maintaining the ALC above us, but then using the, that building as being a, a good location where we could have all of our existing programming that's located, both in Longfellow and in the high school, again, all in one location along with ALC. Because right now, there are those issues that we have special ed that's segregated. We have teaching learning that's segregated, which really would ideally be better if they were all a one building.
Okay. One other question. I mean, in my mind, when I look at the 1964, you know, I don't understand why that wasn't a square, you know, way back, way back then. So, you know what I mean? And I don't know how long that, Biermann's been over there, so, I mean, just out of speculation, if we made that a square, and went from the tennis court over to the, you know, the 246 or Division Street, and made that, how would that, what would you add or subtract, or how would that change your plan if you had that space to work with?
I'm sorry, I'm not sure I'm following you about this.
You know, I mean, obviously, if we made that a square out to the Main Street, or out to Division Street.
Matt?
No.
Yeah.
No, no. He's talking about the area north of the parking lot, the student parking lot where Biermann's is located. So he's saying if that, that property was squared off, that Biermann's funeral home went away, and that became all district land squared directly out to Division Street.
Right. I'm just wondering in your mind, what would you add?
Would that, would that change the ability to get stuff?
What would be the big gain from doing that?
Well, I guess I'd probably add some of the activity, you know, ball field type space, is what I would do. You know, I don't know that you need any additional parking or anything like that. So conceptually, you know, the, I mean, we didn't really get into detail there, but we are losing that one ball field. Where would it go? Where would you find that space elsewhere in the city, the community? I'm not sure. But, I mean, it certainly could go in that upper right corner, you know?
You could net a ball field out of that.
Right.
Okay.
Yep.
Other questions? No.
In your proposed high school, can you point out to me where the gymnasium is?
Yeah, in the new high school? The new high school, the gymnasium, I believe, is to the south, at the very south end of that building.
Right.
Yeah.
My first reaction was looking at the, the auditorium, the gym, current auditorium and gymnasium being apart from the regular high school, may be a problem, but probably not, as long as there's P's, facilities, and everything else in, in the new high school, then it could just not be a problem. But where would, for example, where would the basketball team practice?
I think the basketball would practice at the new high school.
Okay.
Yeah, yeah.
So the games would be not at the existing gymnasium?
I don't believe so.
You're, you're not a voter, so you don't have to answer that question, really, but...
You know, I didn't necessarily, because of the, you know, because of that, that existing high school facility, that activity center, athletic facility that I mentioned, because it, it's so remote, you know, it's remote. So to try to make that kind of typical program space, I just said, you know what, I'm really not taking anything away from the existing high school with this study. I'm, I'm keeping that existing high school, the new high school, the way it was planned, the way it was designed, and we're going to keep that activity centers additional space, but I, I didn't really take away from the high school. Like I said, the auditorium, I don't believe is large enough, you know, plus trying to send students over to use the auditorium, or even to use the fiad facilities, or athletic facilities. It's more, it's more a kind of additional space, if you will.
And Noel, as we, we started to look at this particular option, I'm not turning my mic off, because every time I do it, it gives great feedback here, but we currently have basketball teams that not only practice at the high school, but practice at Bridgewater, practice every day during the winter, every single, even the elementary gyms are full. And one of the things we hear is another gym would be nice. So, the concept of reclaiming some of this piece would be that some more of the high school teams could actually practice somewhat closer. Now, could they play some games there? I could see, you know, potentially maybe a ninth-grade game, you know, or those kinds of pieces. I could see it being used for tournaments on the weekend, or, you know, those kinds of pieces, just because that proximity, I think, would be a real advantage in terms of that particular solution. The question is, you know, whether putting an additional $1.5 million into, you know, reclaimed facility would be worth that. I don't have the answer to that yet, but it is a way that we could save some of this building. And all of that, we used the word "new" a couple of times, and I think "new" in this building is relative, because most of the word "new" in this building is at least 20 years old. You know, so I mean, it's newer, but it isn't brand-new. I think we should clarify that to a certain extent.
Okay, thank you.
But we heard, wanting to look at an option of what could we reclaim from the high school? And when we looked at the plan, we thought this was the piece that would give the biggest bang for the buck and the most flexibility in terms of providing some additional space for students and for the community.
I think at the same time, there are two real issues with doing this. Number one, the location of the pieces that we're trying to maintain are right smack in the middle of the north part of the, of the property. So, you know, if, if they had been on one end or the other, if they'd been on the other end of the building, we could have done a lot of, of more creative things with the spaces we have. So, the, the location is what it is, you can't, you know, get a helicopter and pick it up and move it somewhere else. The other piece I think we still have to remember too, is that when that new building is 50 years old, the core of that piece that you're restoring will be over 100 years old. And I think, you know, the question in the end is, is it really in our best interest to try to reclaim that versus basically demolishing and providing the green spaces we need? Because as you know, the acreage that this is on is way smaller than a typical high school, which is now between 40, typically between 45 and 50 acres, and we have. And I think this is 20...
Right there.
20-some? Mark? Any thoughts?
Yeah, I thought that should be on, might be on there somewhere.
So, it's one of those pieces, and, but I think reflecting back to what we heard the board talking about at, at the last, you know, meeting, was the concept of saying, well, is there a way that we can save a piece of this? And the problem is, when you look at trying to save some of the newer parts of the building, it's the parts that are, are classroom spaces that are spread out in this wide web of spaces with, you know, courtyards and whatever. You can't really come up with a good piece of the classroom space to leave intact. So, when we came back and looked, we said, well, the only piece that maybe makes some sense is to maintain a small theater and, and basically, a competition-sized gym and, and space. But even then, I think what we've got to ask ourselves, is it worth the extra millions of dollars to basically maintain that? And in the end, we'll be, we'd be kicking ourselves 10 or 20 years down the road saying, why did we put any more money into a building that is now 70 or 80 years old? Well, beside that, when the issue comes up. Thank you. Yes, exactly. So, you know, it's, it's a piece that we wanted to share with you, because we heard you say, you know, let's think about this piece. You know, again, the strong, one of the strongest messages we've picked up from initial discussions is people really do desire to try to maintain the, the new high school on the existing space. There's something about this space, its location in, in the, in the community, and its closeness to downtown. People, we're not hearing anybody going, well, go out in farm fields somewhere and, and try to, to put a building up. And so, that does change things. I think it, it may have some real benefits as we talk to the community about it, because if you remember when we got done with the whole discussion with the YMCA, people were very, very hesitant for us to build anything off this site that might preclude some kind of a high school building down the road. And so, you know, I think we, we just need to think about this one really seriously as to whether we want to go down that road or not for the future.
What kind of Jimmy thinking about, I mean, how many courts would that be in the new school? I mean, from what I understand too, and I've heard you say before, is that pretty much what we have, I mean, for sure we're short at least one court, so I'm just wondering...
It seems that, I'm guessing Andover, any of those ones in Anoka Hennepin are probably, what, three? Probably three.
I'd say probably three basketball courts.
Three basketball courts.
Three full-size basketball courts.
With the idea that they play cross-court, they'd be big enough to play three courts from crossways with curtains between each one?
And then like one main basketball court for...
And then if all curtains up, you got one large competition court for, for, or for inters班级 games?
If I could add two more things, so your site, I believe that high school site is about 20, I'm sorry, 36 acres. And then, another thing is, if you remember, there's, there's the deferred maintenance list, that there's, remember, it kind of is a separate item to all your existing facilities, is the deferred maintenance needs. And when I looked at Approach 1, which was, you know, some of the upgrades to existing facilities, that didn't incorporate that deferred maintenance list. So like, like this portion of the existing building that I'm keeping, that 83,000 square feet, just to kind of keep it apples and apples, I didn't include some of those deferred maintenance costs. So there's, even though I'm replacing boilers, and I got energy efficiency boilers and DDC controls... So there's, even though I'm replacing boilers and I got energy efficiency boilers and DDC controls, that sort of thing that I did put in here, you still have some, you know, HVAC units and windows and, and things like that would, that, you know, still need to be considered kind of above and beyond that 4.5 million that I had mentioned. Just wanted to share that with you guys.
So for clarification, you're calling where it says 1964 on that site, and you're calling that 36 acres?
No, the entire, the entire site of your high school.
From Jefferson Parkway to Division. The, the whole property is about 36 acres.
Yep.
Which is what gave them the ability to put Memorial Field on it. I mean, if we hadn't had the extra space, Memorial Field would never have been, you could never have switched and moved it from its previous location onto the high school grounds.
And, and to your point then, so for clarification, how many acres do we have on that where it says 1964? And you said, you, in our conversation before, you said maybe best practices would be if we hopefully had even 35 to 50 acres.
I said, basically, the, a high school property typically is going to be 45 to 50 acres is what... I, I, I would say, you know, for, again, in, in a school district this size, if you have a high school building that's 1,300 to 1,500 students, you're going to put it on a 45 to 50 acre grounds.
So your site is just a little more compact and you're just really trying to fill out more?
So, I mean, the, the, the issue too, Jeff, of the, well, if we just took over the Beerman property, would that give you enough extra acreage? No, not even close.
Well, gain a field is a good question.
You, you'd gain potentially field space.
Noel?
I want to express my appreciation to Dr. Richardson and Matt and others who bring this issue forward with enough time for us to be able to think about it and process it. And it's clear that sometimes the emotional, um, logic isn't necessarily the educational logic that should apply. And it makes sense, we've got time to think about this one. And sometimes people my age take a little longer to dispatch the edge, the, the emotional side over to the educational side, so thank you.
Well, the, I guess the other thing I would just mention too is just, you know, we looked and, and Mark and Matt and I talked about, well, could we somehow figure out a way to move the new high school closer to the remaining high schools? So, because I, I think initially there was some thought of, well, is there some way that you can put a causeway or a whatever between the two buildings? And the problem is in doing that, you, you really put the building in a place where you don't get, you don't get the access, you don't get the parking, you don't get the, the traffic flow to make it work well.
It's a compromise.
And again, remember that this site is, or the, the building itself is a very compact building because it's a full two-story building. So, you know, it's really, as you think about the square footage, look at all the area that's currently taken up by building and how small the footprint is of the new building and yet has the 750 student auditorium. It has the three, the three gym spaces. It's got all the pieces that you would find in a modern high school building.
So if, I'm sorry, if you did retrofit, I mean, and we kept part of that, what is the actual cost? I mean, is it a couple million dollars to keep that gym for a while and put in a new boiler and make that, that place work for a while, so it's...
Yeah, what is the cost?
Yeah.
Yeah, the cost, well, that was the 4.5 million.
4.5.
And again, that included, that included some remodeling to the locker rooms. You know, if you think about it, when you, you know, when you tear down, you tear down part of a building, now you got what used to be an interior wall, an exterior wall.
Right.
You know, you gotta make it an exterior wall with walls and windows and redoing the roof. And again, the utilities that are currently located somewhere else, the boiler, the electrical service, the intercom, everything needs to now be moved into that new building, you know, that piece that remains.
So you're putting in 4.5 million, I mean, and, and what does it cost to tear it down? So now all of a sudden, you're talking about, I got $6 million in my hand and I got an empty piece of real estate there.
Right, so, so before, before I was just tearing down the whole building, the whole high school's being torn down. That was $4 million for the demolition of that high school.
Okay.
You know what I mean? And now I'm putting $4.5 million to try to keep and maintain the existing portion of the high school, but we do save $1 million by not having to demolish as much. So that's kind of just a net, a net add of $3.5 million is how that works out.
Yeah, $3.5 million difference.
Right, right.
The other thing I think is important, Mark, and I just need to ask the question. Once you do the level of demolition that you, you would talk about in this particular option, what does that mean to everything that currently is maintained? My sense is it has to be 2015 standards. Because of the level of demolition that you're doing, you can't simply patch things back up. You, you really have to come up with totally handicapped accessible locker room spaces and whatever. You can't just say, well, it's an old building and now that I've torn the three-fourths of the building down, I can leave the, what's left in 1960s condition or 70s condition.
That's somewhat of a fair statement, other than, I mean, things like, it still has the music suite. There still is the music suite that's part of this building, just because it, it just didn't make sense to try to tear down, you know, those music rooms on the end, it's just, and then try to, again, maintain corridors, and it just didn't make sense, so I just left it. How much would it be used? I'm not sure, but, you know, there's still some of those upper-level ensemble rooms and some of those spaces that I didn't make accessible because I just thought, we're just not going to use them. You know what I mean? So there are still some existing spaces in the building. Um, I mean, I didn't really plan on spending a whole lot of money to make some upgrades too, like the band orchestra type, type spaces. You know what I mean?
Yep.
So they're there, how much would they be used by, you know, by other entities or by the district? I wasn't sure, but they were there and it just seemed like a lot more work to try to get rid of those certain portions, you know? But otherwise, the other remaining portion would be, yeah, kind of good and up-to-date and handicap accessible. Yeah.
Okay, any other questions, comments?
The only other thing then that we would share with you is that we are already scheduling meetings for buildings in, in late April and early May. We will try to make sure that we have a meeting at each building for staff and also a meeting for as many of the parent groups in each building as we can between now and the end of the year. It's probably also likely that we may have to have some additional meetings in the fall once people kind of re-engage. And again, you know, this, this one is not a sprint, this one is a marathon. You know, we, we really have a lot of things to look at. We need to listen to what people are thinking as we begin to share these pieces out. We need to hear what people are willing to, to look at, and we need to be able to share with them, you know, when funding may become available because of bonds being paid off. And so there may be additional resources at certain points in time over the next decade that we're looking at. So, um, I think the important piece is to, to at least share with folks kind of where we are right now and with the knowledge that there will be probably some additional sharing in the fall before we would come back and say, let's talk about what the timing might be for some of these parts.
Okay, thank you. Mark, thank you for, oh, Noel, did you have? I'm sorry, I thought, I thought my phone was...
I'll get it.
Okay. Then, Mark, thank you for being here.
Thank you, my pleasure.
I think your car probably drives itself to Northfield each time you're somewhere.
Lovely drive, beautiful evening.
Thank you very much.
Much better than in February, it was.
Exactly, right. Thanks.
Okay, um, we now will move on to discussion, um, and update on the current legislative budget targets. Dr. Richardson?
Okay, in, in your materials, I've just provided you with a document that came from the Senate CRF-A, which is basically the group that does calculations in terms of finances, and it does some target comparisons. And I just want to share with you kind of the situation we're in. I've been in multiple meetings over the past several weeks where I've listened to lots of concerns from folks about where we are with targets right now. What you'll notice in the document that you have in front of you is that you've got a governor's revised recommendation, you've got Senate targets, and you've got House targets. Let's start on the right and move to the left. House target right now is 156.8 million, about 157 million for E12 education. What we know is in that, there is some, there is discussion about some dollars for general fund, basic formula increase, but maybe some other pieces that they would like to spend money on too. Need to understand that if they spent 100% of the E12 money, it would be about 0.75% increase per year for the two years of the new biennium. So this is by far the lowest level of funding represented in terms of that piece. And so, um, the only thing that you notice is different is if you step above that E12 row, you'll notice there's a tax committee row which has a significant, um, amount of dollars in terms of a House target for the tax committee. Obviously, there may be issues where some of the things that the tax committee does might help indirectly help support schools. So in other words, if they did some things that put more dollars to do equalization action, or if they put in more dollars on opportunities for, um, reducing property tax impact, it might have some ability to be supporting, but understand it would be indirect. So then, the, the initial House target is 0.75. We take a look at the Senate target, the Senate target is 350 million for E12. And again, they've identified a number of other things they want to do beyond just work on the basic formula. What we know is if they spent the entire $350 million, every single penny, you'd get a 2% increase in the first year and a 2% increase in the second year. We absolutely know that that's not their plan. And, and it would, again, would take every bit of money that they have in E12 target to get them just a 2 and 2. In the governor's revised proposal, he's spending almost $700 million. But what we need to understand is when it's E12, it also includes all the preschool funding, and the governor's putting over $400 million in terms of creating the universal four-year-old program. And what we're seeing is with the other pieces he's looking at, he has come out with a recommendation of 1% and 1%, 1% in the first year, 1% in the second year. Here's the problem. Basically, the IDP, the implicit price deflator, which is the calculation that governments use to calculate the inflationary increase that it takes just to keep doing the same things you're doing at the same level, is hovering around 1.8% per year, which is one of the lowest numbers on record. And that's been kind of that way for the last several years. So what we're seeing is if we get the governor's proposal, we have less money in the next two years than, in terms of, with inflation calculated in, than we do right now. If we do the Senate targets, unless they do the entire 350 million, which no one is saying that they would do, the most that they could get would be 2% a year for each year, and that would only let us be flat. There would be no increase for above inflation, and therefore, we'd be operating with basically having to keep things just the way they are. The House targets are the worst, at 0.75 and 0.75. They're going to take us back drastically in terms of the level of funding. So obviously, what we are saying to the House and to the Senate and to the governor, and the universal message coming across from every organization that works in education, whether it's school boards, school administrators, elementary, secondary principals, PTA, PTO, all the other pieces, is you've got to put more money on the formula. You cannot have us operate with not having at least inflationary increases. And if we think about it, given the additional mandates that we have for education, including the teacher development and evaluation component, we really need a 3% increase just to do the things that have already been mandated for us. So the message I'm hearing from people across the state is they're frustrated, they're mad. They cannot understand why instead of trying to address the fundamental basic formula that we're seeing spending going for all sorts of new things or in terms of taking approaches that don't simply try to fund the programming we already have. Even among the folks that are very keen on increasing the early childhood programming, there's a huge argument as to how much funding should go to Universal Four. They would like to see more funding spread for K, or excuse me, for birth-to-five programming, but focusing on students of the highest need, where they know the research says this is where we have the biggest opportunity to impact kids' performance if they are starting out behind. And so as a school district, we're trying to do everything we can think of in working with other folks to basically try to get the message to the governor, to the Senate, to the House, that the targets are too low, that we need really 3% per year to basically cover inflation and to address any kinds of mandates that are already in place, not thinking about any new mandates that are going to be inserted on top of that. And there are a bunch of them that are in various proposals that are being shared in the House and the Senate and from the governor's office right now of other things they want to add to it. What we know is if these, um, targets stay the same, if we see a 0.75 to a 1% increase per year, we know we can because we've been extremely good stewards of the taxpayers' money. We know we can weather the storm for a year. While you're going to find most other districts around us are making cuts. And, and all you have to do is look north to Lakeville, look north to Farmington, look north to South Washington County, and see five and six and eight million-dollar cuts that they're already making. We can live a year and hold the line. Beyond a year, we will need to make cuts for 2016, '17. We'll need to make additional and much deeper cuts in '17, '18, and beyond. And so, you know, we just want you to understand how important it is to share with anyone that you can share with. Tell the governor, tell the Senate, tell the House, the focus needs to be on the piece that you already have responsibility for, the basic formula that funds every school-aged child in the state. And that you need to make sure that there's enough increase in that basic formula that we aren't going backwards. And anything less than 2% is going backwards. Anything less than 3%, we have new mandates that have been added in in the last year that will eat the, the money up that would be in that 1% increase. So, um, that's really the only message that I, I think I want to share tonight is just, right now, we've got a real issue of what appears to be just not having a focus on the things that are, are most important. And we do have basically the, the education committee, community has come together to say, you've got to work on the formula. You know that we've looked at several other things. We've looked at alternative facilities levy. We think that's a good idea. That's not a basic adequacy issue, that's a fairness issue. And again, the fairness there is, remember, only the top 25 districts in the state get the authority to levy for all facilities, to do deferred maintenance, as Mark talked about, and all the deferred maintenance projects. The other 300-plus districts don't get to use it, so there's a fairness piece. The TD and E money is the same way. We have a huge fairness issue because districts who are... We have a huge fairness issue because districts who are doing the QCOM program get $169 per pupil in terms of state aid, an additional $91 a pupil in levy authority. The rest of us get nothing but a one-time $302 per teacher to do TDE forever. Huge unfairness. So both alt facilities and teacher development evaluation are dealing with unfairness. We also talked, and you know, every year I've been here, I've talked to you about equalization and the issues involved with the lack of equalization and referendum of debt service levies. They've at least made some progress in trying to address that over the last couple of years. But remember that as a district, Northfield is still going to spend twice as much for every dollar it gets in terms of operating levy or debt service because the valuation of property we have for the number of kids we have is much lower. Faribault has exactly the same issue. New Prague has exactly the same issue. Austin has exactly the same issue. Owatonna has exactly the same issue. And, you know, until we get an ability to address that piece, even the ability to come back and even think about asking for more money puts us at a huge disadvantage. And then finally, the caper, which is special education. Special education right now, this year alone, the state would have to pony up an additional $619 million just to address the cross subsidy across the state. And that means in order to fund schools, what it actually costs to provide programming for all special education students right now, they would have to put out $619 million, as much as the entire governor's budget for education, twice the Senate, four times the House. And when we don't have that money coming in to address special education, that money comes right out of the general fund formula, takes money away from all students because we need to address the mandates of special ed. And again, I would never say to you, you shouldn't or can't do that, but people need to understand that that has a huge impact on our ability to support all of our kids because we have to support first those that we have mandates to serve. So those are really the key pieces. Basic formula increase, number one, most important thing we can do. Any message that you could give to any legislator you know, any community member you know, you need to be saying to them, address the basic formula. We need 3% and 3%. We've got to get above the inflationary rate if we're going to be able to maintain, especially with the new mandates. If that money comes, then great. Look at alt facilities, look at teacher development evaluation, look at equalization, look at special ed funding. But if you don't do anything else, you better address the general fund formula. And right now, we're not getting any message from any branch of government that says they understand that. So after two lovely presentations and some wonderful videos, I get to be Debbie Downer, but that's basically where we are. So just wanted you to hear and understand the issue we're facing, and I'd be happy to answer any questions you might have.
Board members, questions, comments?
I just want to say, I think it was really important that we bring this forward again. I mean, in the 10 years that I've watched the course of education funding, you know, one thing I have learned, and I think the message that you had pointed to as well, is that the concerned constituents are a very powerful voice. And, you know, as school board members, parents, community, we can be a powerful voice because the next five weeks is going to shape the future of Northfield schools in a very dramatic way. And we haven't had to have these kind of conversations necessarily in previous legislative sessions, but there's cause for real great concern here. And, you know, every February, we're optimistic that they will get the message. And when the education targets came out, it was, disappointment is understatement. So, you know, we're at a real high level of concern here with the weeks coming forward. And Ann and I were at the Capitol last week, sitting in on the Education Finance Committee hearing, and it was really interesting because within the individual senators, several of them making comments about how they understood the importance of putting money on the formula and actually spoke directly to that on three or four occasions, various senators. And where it seems to be coming to a head is with leadership. And that's where it's always concerning, is that at the 11th hour, there'll be decisions made with Senate leadership that, so the message really is to encourage individual senators to find the strength to go forward with their leadership and be able to be a powerful caucus themselves with leadership to do the right thing. With that, we can move on, unless there's any other questions or comments.
We'll move on now to items for individual action. Our first item is the resolution discontinuing and reducing educational programs and positions. Dr. Richardson?
Okay, and as you know, each year, we take a look at the existing positions that we have. We take a hard look at what appear to be the levels of students that are going to be involved in various programs and in various subject areas. And we try to come back to you with initially indicating the potential for reducing a number of FTE in a particular area. Remember that this is not a final decision, that we're still trying to work through and determine what we can do in terms of the FTE, but it basically is putting the board on notice and the staff on notice that there's the potential that this reduction could occur. So this is a .5 of an FTE, 0.50 FTE industrial technology. And again, it is tied to the class sizes that are currently projected for the various industrial technology classes for this coming year. If we take a look at the class sizes, they are some of the smallest that we have currently at the high school level. The other area, as you can imagine, because we've discussed it every year before, are world languages. And while we have some world language classes that are significant size, we have some in certain languages that are also very small. But right now, the smallest numbers we have are in industrial technology. So again, we just want you to be aware of that, and we'd like to recommend that you approve that resolution that discontinues and reduces educational programs and positions as recommended.
Okay. Board members, there's a motion to approve the resolution discontinuing and reducing educational programs and positions. Is there a motion? So, second?
Second.
Oh, I'm sorry, moved by Ann, or moved by Ellen, seconded by Ann. Is there questions or comments? Okay, this is a resolution which requires a roll call vote.
Correct.
Aaron?
All right. Noel?
Yes.
Jeff?
Yes.
Ellen?
Yes.
Julie?
Aye.
Ann?
Aye.
Rob?
Aye.
Motion carries. Okay. We'll move on to the second item for individual action, which is designation of identified official with authority for the Minnesota Department of Education.
Yes, we didn't tell you in your job description that you had to do resolutions and call out everybody's name. This one is kind of an interesting one. The whole idea here is, over the last decade, the MDE has created kind of a myriad of required approvals of who could be involved with doing particular financial and other programs that where there has to be data submitted to the state. So in the past, we've had to do one for SERVES, which is the financial piece. We have to do one for Title I, we have to do one for Title III, we have to do one for special education, and there are different financial systems for each piece. And up to this year, each of those lived in their own separate place. And so the superintendent was responsible for trying to figure out who, you know, needed to go into what group, and we needed, every time somebody moved in or out of a position, we'd have to go in not only just to send the new person in that needed to be added, but to completely redo the list and send it back in again. In their infinite wisdom, the department has decided that they are going to create a single point of contact called the Iowa Identified Official with Authority. And this individual basically is the one that would be the gatekeeper in terms of making sure that all of the various people who have access and ability to sign off or ability to approve various things are kept up to date. We would like to recommend to you that Chris Nesset, who's our information technology person that does that particular work now, would be the individual that would do that. She's currently a student information system specialist. She has typically kept track of these through the years, but it's actually been a double piece where she keeps track of them, and then I have to put pieces in. Last year, unfortunately, at one point, I actually somehow got us, so we were disconnected from the system, and then she and I both had to beg to get reinserted or reattached to the system. We hope this is going to put us in a much better position. So we'd like to recommend that Chris Nesset be approved as the board designated as the identified official with authority, and she will be the one that will actually do the official access, obviously under the direction of the superintendent and other cabinet members.
Okay. Board members, there's a motion to designate Christine Nesset, student information system specialist, as the identified official with authority to authorize user access to the Minnesota Department of Education's secure websites for the Northfield School District. Moved by Noel, second?
Second.
Second by Rob. Questions or comments? Okay. All those in favor of the motion, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. We'll move on to approval of the consent grouping. As a reminder, there were a number of personnel items in the table filed to be added to the consent grouping. Is there anything anyone would like to pull from the consent grouping? Is there a motion to approve the consent grouping? Moved by Ellen, second?
Second.
Second by Ann. Any discussion? All those in favor of approving the consent grouping, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Items for information?
Maybe this would be the time we could talk about the gift agreement.
Oh, sure, yes.
Because it is in there.
Yes, we should.
So I think one of the things we wanted to call out, and again, you remember earlier in the presentation tonight, we talked about the fact that we have a student that's going to the National DECA Conference. And basically, as part of that, their advisor has to go with them. They can't go unattended, and they can't get attached to another district. And so we just wanted to personally thank Victoria Roller. She basically came to us and basically completed the gift agreement with the Northfield Public Schools so that she would cover in the amount of $1,840 the expenses incurred to be able to have our high school business teacher, Julie Warner, go with our student to the DECA National Convention. Now, one of the things that is going to be important to know is that as we go forward in the future, again, because this is a new organization, they really hadn't been thinking about the idea that, gee, how am I going to cover expenses to go to national conferences? And so, you know, we will be working with them to build the fundraising capacity so that they can be doing that as we do with other organizations, so that they have those dollars to make that happen. But in this case, again, Victoria was kind enough to step in and offer to pay that, and again, we really appreciate that, and I know that that will really help for that student to be there and to have their instructor with them during that activity. So it is probably a good time to share that.
Yes, very generous of that community member to come forward. So, okay, we had approved the consent grouping, so we can move on to items for information. The first one being the spring parent-teacher conferences. Dr. Richardson?
Again, you just have the information there, which shows you what the current teacher conference members are going for the year. And, you know, I don't necessarily think we need to share those, other than just be aware that you've got that information. We've really talked about this at cabinet too, and again, we're not sure that this really is a necessity going forward. So unless you say to me going forward, I absolutely have to know what the percentage of parents involved in parent-teacher conferences each term, I think our suggestion is simply that this will be the last spring we will share this with you formally in terms of part of the board meeting.
Well, I think there's always occasions where, when a building comes forward with their site improvement plan, they typically point that out.
Right. You're going to hear it in other places.
Right. And I know, as a parent, with the individual building newsletters that I get, they typically give that information to parents who are probably the ones that are most interested in that information.
And it is data that they will report in other ways in terms of their school improvement plan, et cetera.
Okay. Okay, the second one is the enrollment report.
And again, that material is, I think, is the last item of your regular information. And again, as you take a look at it, we started the year with 3,941.5 students. We're now in April, we have 3,949.5. That is pancake, 10 years in a row. But the good thing is, more than we projected that we would have for this year, which will have some benefit in terms of the available funding that we get, which again, is based on the average daily membership of students.
Okay. So reminder, future meetings, Monday, April 27, and then Monday, May 11. As a last reminder to board members, we'll reconvene immediately following this meeting in the district office conference room for the closed negotiation strategy session. With that, I ask for a motion that we adjourn. Moved by Jeff.
I'll second it.
Moved by Noel, seconded by Jeff. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. We are adjourned.